Motion in a second. Any other people, Rose? Do you want to be in the fray?
For what? Oh, no, I'm good.
Okay. All those in favor of Andy Jones for Vice President signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Claim and allowance docket. Got a motion to approve the claim and allowance docket totaling ten million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred, three dollars and ninety-five cents. Is presented on report dated ten one twenty-five at three seventeen P M.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. And our acting interim part-time, double time.
Nothing part-time about it.
Double time.
Aaron Coons, interim controller. We have one for Niblock totaling six hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred, seventy-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. For Stevens, Francis, and Second Reconstruction. We have under our pre-approved one million, five hundred thousand dollars for our subsidy funding to capital outlay. That's quarterly funding of five hundred thousand a piece.
Say that again.
We subsidize capital outlay.
Oh.
From general fund. And then our total American Rescue Plan claims are four hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred, fifty-four dollars and sixty-four cents.
Okay. Questions for Aaron today? Seeing none, all those in favor of the claim and allowance docket totaling ten million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and three dollars and ninety-five cents signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Got a motion to approve the Board of Works minutes for Tuesday, September sixteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Uh, let's see. How about, got a motion to approve the memorandum of the September sixteenth special meeting of the City of Elkhart Board of Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Could I have a motion to amend the list of people present to include Tim Reeser?
I'm so moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other amendments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. All those in favor of the amended memorandum signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Uh, could I have a motion to accept the revocable right-of-way permit application for one oh seven Franklin Street and authorize Board of Works to execute operation and maintenance agreement with the Emerald Chase Land Development LLC?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Jeff, what are we doing here?
First of all, there's a typo on your memo, which means your motion had an error. I apologize. That shouldn't be Admiral Chase Land Development LLC. That should be Rooted in Downtown LLC. So my apologies. So I would suggest you amend your motion to accept a revocable or right-of-way permit application and authorize the board president to execute the operation and maintenance agreement with Rooted in Downtown LLC.
Okay. Could I have a motion to amend the original motion to change the Emerald Chase Land Development LLC to Rooted in Downtown LLC?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. What are we doing, Jeff?
Okay. Apologize for that. One oh seven Rest Franklin is the corner of Franklin and Main Street. Patrick Industries has been in that building for a number of years. The sidewalk along Franklin was an exposed aggregate sidewalk, something from the seventies. Rooting in downtown purchased the building from Patrick and has done an interior remodel. As part of the project, the city assisted them by replacing that sidewalk. When we did that, we brought it into compliance because that sidewalk, though it didn't look like it, had a cross slope that well exceeded ADA requirements. So we raised the curb up. And what we ended up with right in front of the front door was a flat area near the front door and then a slope that again would have well exceeded ADA requirements. So we worked with Rooted in Downtown and came up with a solution of a planter, kind of a W-shaped planter that's going to be placed in that area. We were a little concerned about the planter being there, and so we asked the developer if they would take full responsibility for planting it, watering it. And most importantly, it's going to have a little drain in it that they would, as part of the maintenance of the building, keep that drain clear so that water could run into the planter and not and not kind of build up in the V section. They gladly agreed. So this is just the agreement signifying that situation, that they will be responsible for that planter, including watering the plants, not the city.
Okay. Questions for Jeff about this? Rose, you look deep in thought.
No questions.
Alrighty. All those in favor of this revocable right-of-way permit signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Could have a motion to execute the platte known as Thomas, Indiana subdivision on behalf of the City of Elkharta's owner.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Jeff?
Excuse me. So this little platte is the block bounded by Thomas, Indiana, Fremont, and Lafayette. It's where the new above-ground storage tank is going. The city owns basically three-quarters of that block. The southwest corner is owned by a small ministry organization. This platte basically moves around the property lines between the, between the city and the ministry organization. There were four alleys on that. The council has vacated those alleys. The city's going to get the entirety of the east-west alley. The ministry organization is going to get the southern half of the north-south alley. So that's all this platte is really doing, is just moving those property lines along. This action and your next action you're going to take, the board has two roles here. First of all, to sign the platte as the owner, and the platte's over here on the side table. And then also to approve the platte as one of the approval bodies of the platte itself.
Okay. So getting the footprint all straightened out.
That's correct.
All right. Other questions for Jeffrey? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting this platte and easement dedication signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Got a motion to approve change order number five for C S O thirty-nine sewer separation project for an increase of forty-four thousand, one hundred dollars and bring the current contract price to five million, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred, forty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Oh, Jason.
Jason Simnick, project manager. Yeah, this is for work at the outfall of the new seventy-two-inch storm sewer. We're, we kind of cleaned up a lot of the outfall area beforehand. It was, years ago, they put a bunch of concrete to kind of try to stabilize the, the outfall with us putting in the out, the, well, just stabilize the bank, sorry, before the outfall. After we put the outfall in, that stabilization was failing in the last year from us disturbing it. And this was to go back in, clean it all out, and get a new stabilization down through there.
C S O thirty-nine is on Franklin, I mean, Indiana just west of Franklin.
It is at Franklin and High.
Okay. Okay. Other questions for Jason? Seeing none, all those in favor of change order number five signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Board of Works, got a motion to ratify partial payment request S R F number seventy of S R F loan W W two-two-one-six-two-zero-zero-five in the amount of sixty-two thousand, five hundred, seventy-two dollars to American Structure Point from the allocated S R F loan for professional services on Oakland Avenue, Project C Harrison Street Design.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Moving along well?
Oh, yeah. This is the one that just, it just bid. We're, yeah, we're quite pleased with work that we got from American Structure Point. Yeah.
Hold the microphone up. You're kind of, we're losing you.
All right. Yes, no, we've been very pleased with the work that Structure Point did for us out there. It's just a standard monthly bill from them.
And so they've, we've already bid this, right?
Yes.
Okay. Are they doing the inspection on it as well?
No, we are going to be doing the inspection in-house.
In-house, okay. Yep, good. All righty. All those in favor of this payment, of ratifying this payment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move that we ratify partial payment request number sixty-two in the amount of three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred, forty-two dollars to C and E excavating from S R F loan W W two-two-one-six-two-zero-zero-five.
Oh. That's this.
I thought that was the one we just did. Okay. I withdraw that motion. I move that we ratify partial payment request S R F seventy-one of S R F loan W W two-two-one-six-two-zero-zero-five in the amount of twelve thousand, nineteen dollars to American Structure Point from the allocated S R F loan for professional services on the Oakland Avenue, Project C Harrison Street Design.
So moved.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move that we ratify partial payment request number twenty-six in the amount of three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred, forty-two dollars to C and E excavating from S R F loan W W two-two-one-six-two-zero-zero-five and twenty-seven, nine hundred, thirteen dollars from loan D W two-two-two-three-two-zero-zero-one for construction on the Oakland Avenue Forest being Phase A project.
Second.
Motion in a second. How's this project going? When is it supposed to be done?
It's going well, and it's supposed to be done in November.
Okay. Do we think they'll make it?
I do. I do think that, well, it depends on, on weather, obviously, for getting pavement done. The, the underground work will get done. Indiana will be completed. It, we might just have a little bit of surface to do down more reekah and in the plant.
Okay.
So.
So it'll be open to traffic?
It'll be open to traffic, yes.
Okay. Alrighty. All in favor of partial payment or ratifying partial payment number twenty-six, C and E excavating signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move that we ratify partial payment request number six in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred, seventy-seven dollars to Selge Construction from S R F loan W W two-four-one-eight-two-zero-zero-six for construction on the Oakland Project B Oakland C S O Tank Project.
Second.
Motion in a second. How about this project?
It's going well. Right now, they're working on C S O twenty-six chamber in Indiana. They'll have some pipe work to do in Indiana after that's done, and then Indiana will get closed back up and open for the winter.
Okay. The trench will be closed up, the road will be open.
Yes.
Okay. Because a driver like me would hear closed up for the winter. Alrighty.
I have a question. Is that payment six or seven? The agenda said seven. You said six?
I think, I think on the motion part, I might have left it as six, but it's supposed to be seven.
Okay.
Says seven.
Payment itself, yeah, I think is seven.
Okay. Do we need an amendment for that, or is it a scrip?
Yeah, just say seven instead of six, and we're good.
Got a motion to amend to say in the motions, payment's seven, not six?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, six, five, by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. More questions for Jason? Anything else you want to mention to us?
No, next, next year, we're getting back to it after, on this one, along with Project C and D are coming. So, you know, it's going to be a busy couple of years still.
Alrighty. All those in favor of the amended motion to ratify payment seven to Selge Construction signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the specifications and grant permission to advertise quote number twenty-five dash twenty-one Bent Oak Area Sidewalk Project.
Second.
Motion in a second. Hello, Mr. Lucas?
Hello, Mark Lucas, Public Works. This is a neighborhood sidewalk rehabilitation project that would address broken and misaligned sidewalks in the Ben Oak area. And we would use ADA funds to pay for that.
Questions? Seeing none, all in favor of proven specifications, grant permission to advertise quote twenty-five twenty-one signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Got a motion to approve two on-street ADA compliant parking spaces at eight oh two West Garfield.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Two?
Yeah, so the Pilgrim Rest Missionary Church requested these. They have two parking lots, one to the east and one to the south. But it's, it's a pretty long trek for somebody with mobility issues, so they're asking for two reserved spots on-street.
Okay. And, go ahead.
Well, they have, they have two parcels worth of property. So there are no nearby residential conflicts.
Okay. And did we change our process recently on eight, on-street ADA parking?
For residential, yes.
And since this isn't a business, we're treating this, we're not treating this like, what, what, if this was residential, would we be doing the same thing?
If we were doing residential, we probably wouldn't be doing two, no.
Okay.
But with the influx of people on Sunday mornings, and I'm not sure about events and things like that, but.
Okay. So it meets all the other requirements that you have set up?
Yes, we are, the east, the east stall would be near the curb ramp on the corner, and the west stall, so when I went out to observe the site, I noticed that the existing sidewalk is broken up and misaligned, so we need to make some improvements to that. So I was planning to connect an access walk to the west stall.
Okay. Great. Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Uh, you wanna take this one?
Um, Mr. Chair, uh, for discussion purposes, I move that the Board of Works issue note credit, um, to the owner of one-seven-two-two East Cobblestone Boulevard. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
For, um.
Or the former owner, maybe?
Well, let's just go with that, and figure it out.
Okay, as it is, uh, direct conflict of utility policies.
Okay, that was a motion?
So moved.
No, that was a motion.
Oh, second.
And a second. Tim, what are we doing here?
Good morning, Tim Reeser, Assistant Director. Um, we were contacted by the previous owner of seventeen-twenty-two East Cobblestone, um, seeking a bill credit. Uh, she put the property up for sale, she vacated the property, um, and then it sold, I believe, in July, um, and during that time period, she was not there, and so she does not feel that she should have to pay for the utilities because there, she was not directly using the water during that time. Um, I did provide a copy of the utility bill, her final bill, after we closed the account after the closing of the sale, showing, um, that there was consumption on the water meter during that entire period. Um, she currently would just like the, the, the total outstanding balance of one hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-one cents credited, um, as the last month, uh, prior to the sale had the highest consumption. Um, she feels that with the property being up for sale, that we shouldn't be charging her for anything.
But she didn't close the account?
She did not close the account, the water remained on and accessible during the entire time the property was listed for sale and vacant.
And there, there was actual usage?
There was, yes, there was consumption and usage on the water meter during that time as well.
Okay, so, oh, significant usage.
And just a question, in such a circumstance, it would be possible to close your account because you've sold the property, is that correct?
So she, she called the day after, so she closed on a Friday, we closed her account the following business day, so it would've been the Monday after, and at that moment in time, we took the bill out of her name, and we tagged the door for the new party to sign. She vacated the property when it was up for sale, and she could've closed her account at that time, but we would've shut the water off to the property, so any prospective buyers would not have been able to, uh, test any of the plumbing or make sure that any of the fixtures were operable, um, until an inspection occurred.
Okay.
So, generally, as a courtesy, when properties go up for sale, they leave the utilities on, so you know that the electricity, the heat, and the water all work while you're trying to buy the house.
Question, uh, was there, is there an irrigation system too connected to city, or is that a well, or what?
Um, I don't know if she had an irrigation system, she did not specify, um.
Wouldn't that contribute to this amount of consumption, though? I mean, that's a lot of.
Honestly.
For being vacant.
The, the dollar amount that's.
Yep, we're looking at the usage chart.
Yeah, so the usage chart is all relative to her prior consumption, so it might show a drastic increase, but if her consumption was right around the minimum charge, and she just had a little bit of overage, it's gonna show a skew in the representation on the graph, but the dollar amount being a hundred and eleven dollars doesn't indicate that there was a lot of consumption through an irrigation system, um, as our minimum bills are right around seventy to seventy-five dollars. She may have just had a couple extra showings on the property that month.
Right. Okay, Tim, thank you, is, uh, the.
They are not present, and I don't believe they are online.
So, is there anyone here, uh, that wants to speak on behalf of Geneva Vincent? Seeing none, uh, seems cut and dry, unfortunate, but cut and dry, so I believe the motion was to deny the credit request, basically. So, the positive vote means there will be no credit given. All those in favor of not giving the credit, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, credit is denied.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept and place on file the wastewater monthly report of operations for the month of August, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Motion in a second. Uh, Dara's here to speak. And a well-spoken person he is.
Hey, good morning, Board, Dara Deegan, Public Works, um, I spoke with her, our, our operator of record this morning, uh, she said the, the month of August was a pretty standard, uh, month for our wastewater operations, uh, with nothing major to report.
Okay. Um, okay, so we had a, I guess, we had a wet weather overflow, that means, uh, did our new system within the plant work well? Did it do as expected?
Yeah, it did, um, you know, we're still, uh, we still have a lot of, uh, combined sewers to.
Sure, out in the system.
Out in the system to, to deal with, um, but it is functioning, um, like it should, and we're, we're actually pretty happy with it, so.
So we didn't have to bypass it to plant, or?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Great, thank you, Dara.
Thanks.
Other questions for Dara? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting placing on file, this MRO, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the delist, delisting of industrial wastewater discharge permit eighty-five dash zero-eight for Con Selmer South located at one thousand Industrial Parkway.
Second.
Motion in a second. Morning, Steve.
Good morning, Board, uh, Steve Brown, Public Works, um, we have a delisting request for Con Selmer South, permit eight, permit number eighty-five oh-eight, um, from our, they are requesting to be delisted from our permitted industrial users, uh, the facility is located at one thousand Industrial Parkway, uh, they have ceased all metal finishing operations and has formally requested to be delisted, uh, they, they plan to continue to inspect incoming product until the end of October, and essentially move to twenty down the street, uh, in, on Industrial Parkway, uh, twenty-four fifteen.
Their treat, their, their, um, their metal finishing operations is moving down the street, is that what you're saying?
No, they have ceased all metal finishing operations, um, currently what they do is just inspect product, incoming product, uh, they'll continue doing that until the end of October, and, um, move down the street to continue to inspect those different products, but no, no metal finishing.
Okay, so then, um, so have they removed all of their equipment?
That's correct, yeah. And also, the chemicals they had on the site have been disposed of as well.
And were we monitoring their removal and cleanup to make sure there wasn't a slug?
Yeah, we've already, yeah, they've already done that, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, great. Any other questions for Steve? Seeing none, all those in favor of delisting Con Selmer South, permit number eighty-five oh-eight, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the delisting of industrial wastewater discharge permit number twon, two-zero-zero-six dash zero-one from Moride International located at one-five-three-six Grant Street.
Second.
Motion is second.
Moride International, permit number two thousand six oh-one, um, they are requesting to be delisted as our permitted industrial user, uh, this facility is located at fifteen-thirty-six Grant Street, they also have ceased all metal finishing operations and, uh, has formally requested to be delisted.
Okay, same thing, you oversaw the equipment removal and?
Yeah, this facility hasn't been running metal finishing for quite some time, for a number of years, but they were just holding on to their permit, uh, hoping things would change for the better, but that never happened.
Okay. All righty, other questions? Seeing none, uh, should've asked, is anybody from Moride wish to speak? No. All those in favor of delisting, uh, Moride on Grant Street, permit number two thousand six dash oh-one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, for purposes of discussion, I move that we find Dimensional Metals Products DBA dash RC Industries in violation for failing to conduct the required self-monitoring and for not submitting the industrial user process report by the established deadline, and that we impose a penalty of one thousand one hundred fifty dollars for permit number ninety-two dash zero-two.
Second.
Motion is second. Who we got here?
Yes, unfortunately, RC Industries, uh, they are required to conduct twice a year wastewater testing and submit results by July twenty-fifth for the first half of the year, uh, they did not complete sampling or turn in their required reports, and has in turn turned and triggered significant non-compliance, uh, per the Enforcement Response Plan, the fine is one thousand, one hundred fifty dollars, nine hundred dollars for not sampling the nine parameters required, and two hundred and fifty dollars for not submitting their reports.
Okay, um, have, you communicated with them, do they understand, are they gonna start? Is there a challenge?
Yeah, there is a personnel change, uh, but representative, representative from RC is here.
Okay.
Would like to hear from them.
Representative from RC Industries?
Hi, I'm not sure if you heard, we need you to make sure you're signed in, and you state your name for the record. Uh, my name is Bruce Carpenter, I'm the Maintenance Manager for RC Industries, Dimensional Metals.
Okay. What would you like to say to the Board?
Uh, I can only apologize for our mistake, it, it is the personnel change, I'm still growing into this position, uh, I failed, and unfortunately, after many, many, many years of compliance and on-time, I failed. I apologize to the Board for this coming up to you.
Okay, other questions for Bruce? All right, thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor of, um, finding Dimensional Metal Products in, uh, violation and assessing a penalty of one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Um, could I have a motion to find Bimbo Bakery in violation for failing to conduct required self-monitoring and for not submitting industrial user process report by the established deadline in accordance with Enforcement Response Plan, a total penalty of six hundred and fifty dollars to be assigned for Bimbo Bakery, permit number two thousand six dash oh-three.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Steve?
Yes, Bimbo Bakeries, they're required to conduct monthly self-monitoring, uh, for several parameters, including fast oils and grease, pH, BOD, suspended solids, phosphorus, and also submit a semi-annual process report by July twenty-fifth. The facility failed to complete sampling for the four parameters in August, uh, and also failed to submit their process report, uh, the recommended penalty is six hundred and fifty dollars.
So, what's the difference between these two? Since one's, has a penalty of one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, and one has six hundred and fifty dollars, is it because?
It's, it's the parameters.
Oh.
RC, they have nine parameters, Bimbo, they only had four.
Okay, understand. Is there anyone from the industry here to speak or online? Seeing none, um, did they say anything to you about what happened?
Yes, they, they also have personnel change, and also, they failed to have the cable for their discharge meter, so they, they did not monitor, which is not acceptable.
Okay, and this was related to the flow proportion sample?
That's correct, so.
Um, we went through this with the cables a couple months ago, at that time, everybody had ordered the cables.
Yeah, I think there's still a few that are still waiting on that component to be installed, but the majority are in compliance.
What if they don't have the cable, that they're expected to do a hourly sample?
Yeah, they're expected to do time proportional, the way we've always done it before, until they, uh, have the cable installed and be able.
All righty, other questions for Steve? Seeing none, all those in favor of finding Bimbo Bakeries in violation, assessing a penalty of six hundred and fifty dollars for permit number two thousand six dash oh-three, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move that we find Simonton Lake Conservancy District in violation for exceeding the established H-two-S limit and assign penalties in the amount of one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, um, for discussion purposes.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Ocar, Ocar Public Works and Utilities conducted H-two-S, um, monitoring for Simonton, uh, September first through the third, the results showed a maximum concentration of seventy-five parts per million, which is fifty percent above the allowable, uh, fifty parts per million limit, um, our Enforcement Response Plan recommends a penalty of one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, this is the second violation within a twelve month rolling period, so therefore the penalty has increased.
Okay, and it's the third in fourteen months?
That's correct.
August of twenty-four, October of twenty-four, and then September of twenty-five, okay. All righty, is there anyone here from Simonton Lake Conservancy District to address the Board on this issue? Uh, Mr. Stephen Grubb.
Steve Grubb, Midwest Contract Operations, representing Simonton Lake, yeah, we had a glitch that would happen to be over the Labor Day weekend, we had a high flow, and our chemical feed couldn't quite keep up with the demand, cause just before, uh, they recorded the seventy-five parts per million, our lift station recorded three parts per million, and our pumps ran shortly after that, and then it laid there in the force main, cause we have through the day about a twenty-hour, you know, detention time where it's in the, the wet well and in the force main, but I've sensed the violation, I've reached out to our chemical provider, and, uh, he, they're in between reps, and so I haven't heard back from him, but I've talked with another vendor of ours, and he's made a couple of recommendations, one of them that we should maybe try a, a, uh, test of adding the chemical that we use, the bioxide, to neutralize the H-two-S in the wet well itself, I guess similar to what I think Antua does, I'm not sure if they still do it that way or not. I guess similar to what I think Antua does. I'm not sure if they still do it that way or not. I know years ago they did, but that we should add it into our wet well because they're saying that what we're adding downstream isn't staying neutralizing it well enough. I mean, coming into the wet well, most of the time it's below point five, and that day we had an excursion. And so that's what they're thinking, maybe by the time it lays in the wet well for, you know, fifteen, twenty hours, that it's coming out of suspension, and maybe we need to actually add more chemical uh, in the wet well. But then also, an, another vendor has a, uh, uh, another remedy possibly that I haven't talked to our board yet about, but it was a, looks like it's a mechanical type operation instead of a, a chemical operation. And so that may be something we're looking into down the road, too.
Are, are your flows at Fourth of July and Labor Day the same?
Pretty much, yeah.
And you didn't have a problem on the Fourth of July?
If we did, it was, I, it didn't show up on my meter.
Okay, and so you meter at the influent to the wet well, not the effluent?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we do, uh, we had been, you know, after the, uh, consent order, we had been monitoring in your manhole, but then we had some issues with our monitoring equipment, and we'd had to send them in for service, and we've just recently gotten those back, and so we're gonna hopefully start doing that again.
And then, does Steve get a copy of all that monitoring? Or do you only let him know when there's a violation of the effluent monitoring when it's working?
Oh, the effluent one?
Yeah.
We hadn't, but I can do that, yeah.
Well, I guess historically, I don't know, talk to Steve if he wants that, but historically, um, the effluent monitoring, did, was the effluent monitoring working at the Fourth of July? No?
No.
Okay.
I think that was when I discovered that it had quit working on us, and we had to send it in for, for service. Unfortunately, we were using a new and improved one, and they've been having issues with their firmware and stuff, and so they think they have it under control now, so.
Yeah, you always get nervous when they get new firmware.
Yeah.
Alrighty, uh, anything else you wish to say?
No.
Anyone else wish to speak on this issue? Seeing none, well, board, did you have any more?
Nope.
Alright. Ready to vote? Want to make any changes? No? Alright, all those in favor of, uh, finding Simonton Lake Conservancy District in violation uh, for, uh, their H2S limit and assign a penalty of one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars? Uh, would like to make one comment first. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have started that. Uh, it seems like a lot, and I know that Simonton Lake and Antua and Cobus Green, I believe, Creek, Green?
Green.
Green. Have all put a lot of effort into figuring this out. Um, I was involved when we weren't keeping track of this stuff, and a manhole was totally eaten away by the H2S, results of the H2S, and probably a mile of sewer line was damaged as well, so, um, that, this is a very, uh, it's a steep penalty or a stiff penalty, but the, uh, repercussions, well, up here, if the sewer under Cassapola Street goes bad, gets eaten away, uh, it'll be a major problem. So, having said that, all those in favor of this penalty signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Could have a motion to find JBS Prepared Foods in violation of discharging wastewater with pH less than five and assign penalties in accordance, uh, penalties of two hundred and fifty dollars in accordance with the, uh, Enforcement Response Plan, JBS Prepared Foods, Permit Number two thousand two dash oh one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Steve?
Yes, this is the first, uh, pH violation for JBS Prepared Foods. Their self-monitoring report uh, showed that their discharge had been at the level that four point nine four. Uh, this falls out of the range of the minimum requirement of five, and the Enforcement Response Plan recommends a two hundred and fifty dollar penalty.
Okay, um, has the, uh, solids issue been taken care of?
Solids in our line, uh, as far as I know. Uh, I, I'll check again with collections, but everything has been pretty smooth out there.
Okay. Anyone from JBS wish to speak to the board? Seeing none, board, all those in favor of the motion of finding JBS Prepared Foods Permit Number two thousand two dash oh one in violation and assess a penalty of two hundred and fifty dollars, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Seeing astonished, whoa, um, could have a motion to find Antua Township Sewer District in violation, uh, of their permit for exceeding the established local limits for mercury and assign penalties of five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Mercury?
Yes, um, we conducted our recent local limit study, and mercury, uh, has taken a significant reduction. It's, it's about half of what it was previously. The previous limit for, our local limit for mercury was zero point zero zero nine milligrams per liter, but now it's zero point zero 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 one eight milligrams per liter, so that's, that's about a fifty percent reduction, so although mercury is a challenge, um, our limit is extremely low, so it's.
When, when you say our limit, though, that's what is required by this federal law.
That's correct, yes.
For the utility, and we don't have a way of removing mercury out of a wastewater treatment plant. The only solution is to make sure it doesn't come into the sewer system.
That's correct, and if we have a violation, we must address it, so. Uh, with that being said, uh, we monitored Antua, uh, July ninth, Public Works conducted some sampling for ultra-low level mercury. Uh, the results showed an exceedance of thirty-nine percent above the established limit, and the Enforcement Response Plan recommends a penalty of five hundred dollars.
Okay. Um, at first I was really shocked when I read this because I had forgotten that there is industrial connections, as opposed to, Simonton Lake doesn't have industrial connections.
No, that's all residential.
Yeah, but Antua has, uh, at least one industrial part connected.
Not sure, but we do have representatives here.
Oh, okay, okay. I'll, I'll, I'll grill them. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Antua Representatives, welcome to speak now.
Well, thank you.
Welcome.
It's been a while since we had the opportunity to, um, defend ourselves, I think.
You'll have to come on a day without a violation.
Uh, real quick, a review here. On July nineteenth, we received notification from Mr. Brown that we were out of compliance with their mercury discharge permit. Uh, and the discharge occurred on July ninth. The mercury was measured at two hundred and fifty parts per trillion. This is parts PPT, not to get confused, that's a low number. And the limit for the discharge is a hundred and eighty parts per trillion. Now, we don't have um, and we're fined a five hundred dollars was being assessed because this is at a compliance situation. Just a bit of a review, and we've been here, not with mercury. So to the best of our knowledge, we've never had a mercury discharge in the, Antua system. We've discharged over three hundred billion gallons of water, with not one mercury discharge ever. The, uh, sample for mercury analysis was taken from manhole number twenty dash forty-three, which is not part of our system and which, which Antua does not have any control. So it, parts per trillion level contamination is a huge issue, you know, and the, um, uh, there are no customers on our system, and, well, industrial or otherwise, that uses mercury and discharge, well, uses mercury at all. We've never seen it, and we've, you know, we've been doing this for twenty, twenty-five years. And considering the extremely low levels of mercury involved, we propose the following, okay? Because we're not, I don't want to say, yeah, we did it, because I have no idea that we did. And the, and the minute you start to concede that, you start to, you know, you're setting precedence on what's going on here, because then somebody's gonna go back and say, where's it coming from? And I don't have any idea. So what we like to do, working with Mr. Brown, is we'd like to resample the, the, at the same point, and then split the samples. We'll send one sample out to our lab for analysis, and you can analyze one for, and we'll do the same sample at the same time, and we'll compare those two. At the same time, or maybe afterwards, we'd like to go back to our discharge point, not your manhole, but our C1 discharge point, which goes into the force main, which comes to you, and sample that for mercury, because if we're gonna have to find this, we're gonna have to go way upstream to figure out where it's coming from. This is gonna be a lot of work, and it's gonna be a big expense. I mean, these are not cheap things for us to do, and we don't have a staff. Well, maybe we do. Maybe, but I guess, okay, um. If the problem persists and we can't pin it down through analyses, one, our first thought is that the analysis is not correct relative to our sewer. That could be contamination, that could be a lab, uh, God only knows what it could be. This is also, you're normally speaking here in terms of one part per million, like we're talking about H2S. This is a billion times smaller than that. I mean, just think of how low we're getting. I mean, this is a small number. So what we like to do is, uh, start a, a system, working with Mr. Brown, to reanalyze these things and see what we have. And once we understand what we have, then we'll make a plan to either eliminate it, or just simply say that was a mistaken movement.
So are you then asking us to table this action?
Yes, until we have an opportunity to figure out what's going on.
Okay.
We, we have no way of, of understanding where this is, what this is. When we had our H2S problems, we knew what it was, we just didn't know how to fix it. Now we have no idea what it is at all, and if you don't have an idea where the problem's coming from, there's no hope of fixing it.
Sure, uh, another question. I'm, I'm sorry, what was your first name again?
John, John.
John, okay, um, so our sample was taken at the, uh, uh, manhole right there at?
Twenty, uh.
Moose Trails and County Road Six.
Right, but is your manhole not ours?
I understand.
Okay.
Okay, Steve, you have a comment before I keep talking, which is always good.
Uh, I have no problem working with Antua, but I do want the board to know that that manhole is Antua only's waste stream. There's no other, uh, contributors. That, that is all Antua. And also, we did resample, uh, and they are back in compliance. I'm not sure what the problem was, but it's up to the board. We're open to table this and work together, but I just wanted to be known that that manhole is Antua only, and, uh, we have re-sampled, and they're back in compliance, so.
Um, I, I'm comfortable with tabling it if, if staff is comfortable. The, the only caveat I'd give you, John, is I would suggest when you're sampling at your, and that at the same time you sample at the, at the city's manhole at the same time, so you do.
I would agree. We'll try to coordinate these samples and make sure that we have a representative both from us and from Elkar at the same time with the same sample and send them to different labs.
Sure, yeah, that's fine.
Because these are so low, and it's gonna be almost impossible to figure out where this is coming from.
I, and, and I hate to tell you this, because they are very low. I was, another mic story, Jeff, Tim, sorry. Uh, back in the early two thousands, the city was getting hit with, uh, uh, about twice a year from two different locations in the city, mercury violations.
Right.
And, um, I was amazed. I'm going, ah, so what are they throwing about, uh, you know, a five-gallon pail of mercury? And the lab said, no, no, what's been going in has been less than a tablespoon.
Right.
That sets it off, so it's extremely difficult to find. Uh, in that case, it turns out that somebody was cleaning something they shouldn't, and uh, you just may never find it. It might have been a homeowner. I don't know if it would be, uh, an old, um, help me, thermometer. Somebody broke and threw away. I believe that can cause a problem.
I mean, you, you can put all that together, and I understand why the limits are so low. Mercury is bio, bioaccumulated, which means that at very low levels, your body just accumulates it. Now, for us older people, it doesn't make any difference, we're not gonna be around that long.
You, you, just to be clear, you older people.
What's that? Uh, whatever. Careful, don't pickle me, I'm, I'm sensitive, but the, the, uh, uh, if you have children that are, this is what happens, you know, and it's, it's the Mad Hatter syndrome.
Yes, yes.
And indeed, it's bioaccumulated with children. Over a long period of time, they accumulate this, they don't eliminate the mercury, and eventually it has neurological, significant neurological. So it's a real deal, but what I don't want to do is get involved like we were before into something that's a massive undertaking on our part, that we're not real sure it's real. You know, we want to go back when Mr. Brown says, let's take these samples again, make sure it is, so we don't chase anything. At that point, we'll come back and tell you what we did.
I mean, I'm reasonable with that. I mean, I'm comfortable with that, so comfortable, in fact, if you're done.
Yes.
I would recommend, uh, could have a motion to table this, uh, action until a further date?
So moved.
I'm second.
I didn't ask the board, are you comfortable with doing this?
Oh, I am. I appreciate your due diligence here. I mean, I don't, I didn't hear you. I, I didn't hear you, you know, complaining about the fine. Your interest is finding where the problem is, and that's what I.
I'm here for five hundred bucks. I mean, I don't want to.
Yeah. Right.
But that isn't the issue. We could spend a lot of money and have a lot of trouble if we can't figure this out.
Sure. Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Andy. All those in favor of tabling this action until a further date, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. This is tabled. Interesting.
Mr. Chair, I move that we find Gminehart in violation for exceeding the established local limit for mercury and assign penalties in the amount of five hundred dollars in reference to permit twenty twenty-five dash zero-three.
I'm second.
Motion is second. Steve, it's a mercury month, huh?
Yeah, unfortunately, uh, this is similar to Antua as well. Uh, we collected a sample at Gminehart's end of pipe. We normally sample Gminehart at their end of process, but Gminehart has not been processing, uh, any metal finishing products for quite some time. Uh, so the only discharge, uh, or the sampling point is at their end of pipe, which is located in, uh, uh, State Route nineteen, high-traffic area. Uh, we collected a sample, turned it in for analysis, and there was a violation. Uh, the Enforcement Response Plan, uh, recommends a penalty of five hundred dollars.
Okay, uh, is there a representative from Gminehart here? You're welcome to come up at this time.
Well, thanks for, uh, want to speak, uh, my name is David.
My name's David Purtle. Been there, president and CEO, been at Gminehart 42 years, so quite a long time. I want to say the city does a great job working with us, you know, back when we processed water. We had a real good relationship maintaining that. Door's always open. But I guess what I ask on that is that, one, we don't process water. We haven't processed water. We're quite slow right now, unfortunately. Matter of fact, male wise, there's another male that's at our factory, Rick, you know, and myself, and we have about four or five other ladies that work for us. But we do a lot of inspecting and repackaging is what we do from factories overseas. But we got this violation and, you know, Steve, what I ask is, you said the, the manhole cover in, right in the middle lane, 19. I was quite surprised, you know, through all the, you know, acquiring of land, expanding the road, there was the first expansion, and years later, there was the next one, you know, to go to the four lanes there. And, excuse me, we had a, you know, problem with the toilets backing up. We said, hey, what's going on? There's something wrong. We couldn't get it cleared up, so we called Road Rooter out. And, you know, we find out that that manhole cover is our responsibility and we're clear that out. And I'm going, wait, you mean, you want me to stop traffic on 19 to check that out? And then what happened was, you know, I'm giving you a little history that we went through there is that Road Rooter come out, they run the camera through, he said, hey, you got a blockage out there at the, you know, manhole cover. So you're going to have to do something to get that cleared out. I said, well, we have more employees then. So we're trying to run, you know, production here and said, can you do anything about it? He said, no, I can't go out there and do that. He said, you know, who's going to stop traffic? We had a couple, an old van, another old car there and we said, hey, how about if we stop traffic, turn the traffic lights on, we'll watch and you clear it out. Now, it was cold out and, you know, he, he says, yeah, I'll do that. And he took hot water and rinsed out the manhole cover down there and he showed me, he said, here's your problem. And we brought this up and we really couldn't, I guess we haven't got anywhere with this part of it. Anytime that, you know, the, go ahead, start flushing slow, you'll find out that, out there at that manhole cover, it's starting to back up. And it's got to be colder months to have it happen. It started, it's hitting and freezing. What had happened was, is he shows me the cement washout, you know, we washed out the truck, cement truck. Well, he's showing me that it's been washed out down in this manhole cover and it needs to be busted out. And, you know, I guess if I get to, if I could get the confined space entry, you know, everybody blocked the road, you go down and bust cement out and get it out of there. But as I thought back on it, it wasn't when the road was widened that that happened. It was, you know, I guess it was maybe, what, five years ago, there was repair work done down through there. Went down through and they cut sections out and they repaired it. That manhole cover was replaced. And then they replaced a section by the next driveway of ours. And I questioned a couple of things, but, you know, the crew that was doing it, they were one of the contracted ones, they weren't from this area. And really didn't get anywhere, but what it turns out, I'm, I'm positive, is when they washed out their equipment and changed that manhole cover, we ended up with this blockage problem that's in there. And at one point, just, well, I won't say the dates, there's the form we turned in there that has it in there. We started having that problem again. It was on a Sunday and they all say, oh man, gotta get this cleared up. We had employees coming in, didn't want to, you know, got a small crew, had stuff to get out the door, didn't want it to stop. So I say this, I had the fire department stop their trucks there and say, hey, I want to, can you do this for me? Let me clear this main out. Said, no, it's there, I can hit this thing with this pipe and it's going to open right up. And, you know, they told me they could do it, they couldn't touch anything. So we'll stop the truck, make sure you don't get hit, but we can't do anything, you gotta be quick. Well, at that time, when I opened up the, went to open up the cover, there was so much water coming out of it. There was a blockage downstream somewhere. And if that's the same place that they're checking, that she got the sample from, we had no idea where she pulled the sample from. And to see the pictures till afterwards. Now, I'm not saying, I believe she got the sample. I'm not saying that they didn't, they didn't find the sample in there, but what I'm saying is I don't trust that we're, that our company's the only that goes in there, into that manhole cover. Because you can look in there and there's a pipe that looks like it comes this way and there's one that comes this way. And the one you sent me yesterday, it shows that wastewater line goes underneath that. I think they're one of the same. Now, you guys gotta remember, that was done in 1985. And I don't know where that came from. You know, and I do know that that was full, manhole cover was full that day. And the fire department called the city for me. And then they told me who we'd contact again. And my brother knew someone that worked down there, he talked to him and they come out and actually found the blockage, they pumped it, found the blockage. So what I'm saying, that blockage was somewhere else, you know, upstream from us. And when we haven't processed any water, one, we don't use anything with mercury in it. You know, I went through and I even checked some of this silver polish, some of this stuff, even after I asked everyone, they said, no, no mercury, no mercury. I even called the companies, is there any mercury? How can that be? My concern isn't the $500. My concern is the second violation. Because I don't know where that first one came from. I don't know how that got in there. And, you know, as Steve said, we don't process. It's, there's nothing to sample. If you want to check another sample, is, you're going to scrape the pipes to do it, you know? And I'm saying that I just don't know, I'm more concerned with down the road. Because however that happened, it could happen again. And I sent some pictures in randomly, I was driving back down 19 last week, Napanee Street, whatever you want to call it, back to the shop. And, you know, one of the buildings down the road had a line discharging into the drain on the road. I thought, no, that can't be. And I went and looked at that. And, you know, there's, there's the rocks, you know, they put the rocks in there, I guess it's called the, what is that called, a, well, jeez, I can't think of, can't get the word to my head, but the water basin, you know, the water catch is what it is, catch basin there. Well, one come from the back of the building down, you see it in the photos, and one come from down in the catch basin, back up and out. The cement is tapered in this way. You see wet water running down through there. And the catch basin had a film on top of it, I don't know what it was. The only thing is that it could have been nothing, you know? But I don't know what that was. It was a testage, they're putting it out of there. It was a landscape business, you know, pesticides, fungicides, there's mercury in them. And I would think, I would think if Steve drove down the road and saw me with a, you know, with big discharge hoses pulled out across the sidewalk into the city drain, that'd be a problem. You know, and I'm not trying to get, I'm not trying to get any of my neighbors that's trying to stay in business in trouble either. No, not at all. I'm just saying that that's an example of where stuff could come from that I don't know, I have no control of. And, you know, we're down so small, how do I know when it's going to happen again? You know, and then the, the second, second violation, you know, gets much more serious than the first, you know? And we've always tried to maintain, you know, two code. I think Steve would back us up on that. Anything we need to do, we try to do, correct it, you know? But right now, we don't. And haven't for, I guess, four years. No metal processing, you know, no chemicals, none of that. The whole side of, the whole side of the factory is just dead. You know, and you look at our wastewater, everything's kind of rusty, you know, it doesn't get used, you know? So that's been a concern long term. You know, how do we know where that came from? Or I, you know, I, yes, I'd like to see you table that, that $500 too. But my concern is too, I guess my biggest concern is, what caused that? How do we find that? Because, you know, I don't want to be getting, you know, a random sample pulled, somebody else dumped out, you know, threw in there.
Do you have a monitoring manhole on your site?
Middle 19.
Okay, so one of the things, if this continues to occur.
We do have a pit, we have a, we have a wastewater pit there. You know, but that's just a, a processing, you know, it's not the normal sewage, but that's.
I, I think we've asked in the past, we just penalized, um, plum rose. They decided to put a monitoring manhole at the, right before it came out into the public right of way to avoid this very problem. You know, I mean, I, I certainly sympathize with you. Well, I guess first of all, if you see anybody dumping anything into the city's sewer, we'd certainly want to know about it right away. On Napanee Street, as it turns out, that's a separate sanitary storm sewer. So if somebody is pouring something into a catch basin, that's just going right to the river, it's not coming to the wastewater treatment plant. Still not good. And we'd like to know if anyone is pouring anything into a catch basin or a sanitary sewer, please don't ever hesitate to call Steve up and leave him a message on that. But if, if you want to talk with Steve about other ways to deal with this, unfortunately, the, as John had mentioned, this chemical is so dangerous.
Oh, yeah.
Compound is.
But, but you understand what I'm saying? There's the, the water pits are dry, we don't use it, we don't use anything with mercury. You know, where's, where did that sample come from? If I ask Steve to come out and test it now, he's going to have to scrape pipes. You know, it's.
Well, then, your, your option, I believe then, would be to put in your own, because if you're, do you have your own sampling manhole under State Road 19 or is it a common manhole with the city? Steve, can you help me with this? You know what I'm asking.
Yes, their, their control monitoring manhole is specific to them.
Okay.
But they, State Road 19 was widened and therefore that control monitoring manhole is still in a high traffic area. It wasn't moved on their property, so it's, it's more of a challenge for them to have access to it, so.
Okay, and is there only one pipe going through that?
I believe, yes, that's what the records show.
Okay. And is it, how close is it? I don't know. Maybe check and see how close that is to the invert of the sanitary sewer to see how much of a backup would cause the, it to surcharge back up into there.
Yeah.
Here's a question I have too. Why would it, why would it back up after heavy rains, need a lot of water? Why would that back, if that's?
You need to talk into the microphone.
If it's an isolated manhole, just for Gminehart, why would that back up with overflow water? You know, you, you just said the sewer line is separate, goes right to the river. How would that tie back into that line? I mean, I'm talking, you guess, fire department, it was full to the top.
Catch basin?
No, no, the manhole. And when they, when they opened up, when the, when the city truck went out and pumped and cleared whatever the blockage was, that's where the water went. We had no problem after that.
Okay.
So I'm saying something made that fill up. And the manhole cover, yes, that was originally on our property. Well, in the domain, you know, you take the first property, take the second property, you know, I don't mind saying, I can tell you all about making flutes. I don't do manhole covers, you know, and why they wouldn't move that when they took the property, I don't know. You know, why would I have to pay for putting in a new manhole cover now to clear myself when I don't even process the water?
Um, yeah.
If I can make a recommendation, we can see if we can get with our televising crew and see if we can televise their line to confirm what our records show and maybe also see if there's a backup or concrete, maybe get a better understanding of, of their sewer line.
Okay. And then, can they de-list?
Uh, they, they did de-list, but their, now their permit is a non- categorical significant industrial user, so we still keep on our radar and sample.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right, then I'm hearing table?
Sure, yeah. And we can follow up and update the board with our findings.
Okay. Now, before we have the motion, normally you're not supposed to discuss anything except whether or not to table. Any questions from the board or Gminehart or Steve at this time?
Steve, have you, have you looked down the man, I heard him say there are three, he sees three pipes going into that manhole. Have you ever looked in there yourself to see?
Yes, yes, we took a look at it.
Are all three theirs?
We believe so. And also the records show that it's isolated from Jessica Minehart, so, but we can confirm it. I'll try to confirm it with the televising.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah.
You good?
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Rose, anything?
No, nothing further from me.
Okay, could I have a motion to table this action until a later date?
Some moved.
Second.
Motion is second to table. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much, David, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the reduced self-monitoring requirement request for Maverick Packaging Inc. Industrial Wastewater Discharge Permit Number 2024-01 from monthly to semi-annual.
Second.
Uh, motion is second. Steve?
Yes, Maverick Packaging, we, this is a new permit, relatively new permit. And what we typically do with new permits is have the industry monitor more frequently. They have confirmed and provided documentation that they've been in compliance and therefore they have requested to have reduced monitoring. We support this request.
Okay.
That's.
Standard operating.
Standard operating, yes.
All right. Having heard that, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Go ahead.
Could have a motion to ratify the following: two water assessments, one sewer assessment, seven driveway permits, two releases of bonds, and one revocable permit.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agreement with North Edes Steel LLC for the purchase and installation of a storage shed in the amount of $13,735.80 and delegate signature authority to Jeff Savatsky to sign the agreement online on behalf of the Environmental Center.
Second.
Motion is second.
Good morning.
Morning.
We are looking to.
For the record, you still have to state your name.
Jeff, sorry, Jeff Savatsky, Director, Elkhart Environmental Center.
Go ahead.
We are looking to install a 24 by 30 shed for our equipment out back.
The barn out there is being used by somebody else or has it come down?
It is still being used temporarily by another department.
Sounds good to me. This is in your budget?
It is. It's a budgeted item for this year.
Okay. Other questions?
It's going to be a log cabin?
The color schematic will look, will match.
Okay.
It'll be metal. Recycled metal.
Other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Jeff.
Mr. Chair, I move that we grant the request of Josh Holt to quote number 25-20 for Traffic Division Vehicles.
Second.
Motion and a second. Josh?
Good morning, Board. Josh Holt from Elkhart Central Garage. We are replacing a, they call it Digger Derrick Truck, which is basically a truck that they put telephone poles and light poles in. It's got a screw digger on it. The city currently has one, but it is from 1987.
So?
It's in great shape and I'm sure as it goes down the road somewhere, someone will get use out of it. They are also looking, we're also looking to add a bucket truck for their new line tech, so pretty simple stuff.
And this is all in their budget?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, questions for Josh? And you're going to go through one of those online things to do this? Are you going to put out quote specs?
I do have quote specs. I have a list of companies that we're going to go through because we're trying to find used ones, honestly, because these trucks aren't going to be, especially the line truck, it's not going to be used every. It's not going to be used every day. Um, we just need something that's more reliable. Because currently the truck they have, every time they use it, something breaks on it. It's, uh, kind of old.
Okay. All righty then, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Let's see, let me find, uh, contracts this hourly. I think we need a motion to approve the professional service agreement with Rundell, Ernst &amp; Berger and Associates for, uh, Plan Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals Training Cost Not to Exceed $12,040.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion is second. In your budget?
Good morning, Eric Trotter Planning. Yes.
Okay. What are we going to teach?
We are having our, our land use consultant do, uh, training for both the Plan Commission and the BZA. Um, we've had a fair amount of turnover in both boards and we tried it a few years ago with Board of Zoning Appeals and had really good results with a different consultant. We're trying it with our land use that we have more consistency within the department and interaction with that consultant. It's going to be an academic situation where it's going to be more, they're, they'll probably get some homework and it's going to take them back to school probably.
Glad I'm not on one of them boards anymore.
That's needed though, I really, it's.
And this is at the request of the Common Council.
Sure. Well, I think it, it makes sense. Uh, we bring in citizens to do some of these jobs and they, we want them to be able to make informed, educated decisions and not just be bobblehead dolls nodding with everybody else.
Completely agree.
So, having said that, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Eric. Our next action is, uh, the Ryan Dustin disciplinary. Let's start and take.
Did we skip the use and event permits?
The what?
The use and event permits. They're on my agenda, even though we don't seem to have our usual item in front of us. Like, I move that we, no, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I move that we ratify Conselmer Marching Band Invitational October 4th and that we approve the No Kings 2.0 for October 18th.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Now, oh, it wasn't tabled. It was just waiting on action. So, we have a grievance hearing. Uh, before we do anything, I understand this has been withdrawn?
Um, yes, the, uh, the board actually already had the hearing. They were going to make the decision today, vote on the decision. But we reached an agreement. So we ask that the board just.
So, I guess, um, I'm pretty good on a lot of Roberts rules. Since, uh, since the board was going to do something, should we bring it up and let it die? Or?
I would table it and then next time amend the agenda to just remove it.
Okay, got a motion to table the grievance hearing decision for Ryan Dustin.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
If, if I may explain, um, because I walked in after the board had approved the agenda.
Ah.
And, um, because it should have just been removed from the agenda at that point, so you can just do that the next time.
Okay, okay.
And the next one I will not be at.
The next board meeting? Okay. Uh, if you would hang around for a few minutes afterwards. All right, this is now public participation. Is there anyone in the room which is to comment or join the discussion? Seeing none, anyone online wish to address the board? You do have to be visible during any comments. Seeing none, we'll close public participation and look to Rose to give us our favorite motion of the day.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. We're adjourned.